Good evening and welcome to the Edina Planning Commission Meeting of August 27, 2014. My name is Kevin Staunton, I'm the Chair of the Commission. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Shear.
Here.
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 Commissioner Horace.
Here.
Commissioner Allison.
Here.
Commissioner Horace.
Here.
Commissioner Platterer.
Here.
Chair Staunton.
Here, thank you Jackie. The next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any additions, subtractions, modifications to the meeting agenda? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The meeting agenda is approved. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. There is only one item on the consent agenda this evening, and that is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of July 23, 2014. Are there any modifications or revisions suggested to the meeting minutes? Commissioner Shear.
On page nine of fourteen, I am cited as having agreed with Commissioner Lee. While I would love to have done that, I was not at the meeting.
All right, very good. Any other revisions? Anybody who wasn't here who would like to be here?
[Laughter]
Commissioner Forrest.
Yeah, the reference to the ordinance from, the Brainerd's Conflict of Interest Policy, rather, is that, the source of that was the League of Minnesota Cities, not the League of Women Voters.
Where, what page are we on there?
Page twelve.
Page twelve, thank you Commissioner Carr.
Just so if anybody's out there trying to look for that, and they're trying to search under League of Women Voters, it won't be there.
League of Minnesota Cities.
Right.
Very good. Are there other revisions to the minutes? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda with the July 23 minutes as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The meeting minutes from July 23 are approved. Next up is the community comment portion of our meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where we invite members of the public to comment on items that are not on this evening's agenda. And if you'd come up and use one of the side microphones and identify yourself, name and address, and share your thoughts with us. Or if you have something to show us, you can do the middle one, but we're gonna need you to get... Oh!
You okay?
Yes.
Do we get that on camera? We're gonna do a replay on that.
I hope the microphone survived.
[Laughter] Are you okay?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Let me make sure I get the right input from there.
And I think you'll need a, you got the microphone there? The handheld, Mr. Groetz?
Yeah, please, microphone.
Oh.
Perfect. I think it's on. Jordan, is it on for him? Okay, go ahead.
I don't see it on the screen yet.
While he's pulling it up, you can go ahead and introduce yourself with your name and address.
My name is Jim Groetz, and I have lived at 5513 Park Place since 1979. We appreciate the city is making beneficial changes in the teardown process. We were up at the work session. We think the process could be improved if some additional changes are made on the front end before permits are issued. Currently, city policy does not require a teardown site visit by a city engineer. That question was asked, and as you heard from Cindy Larson, you know, she doesn't really do that. Not all surveyors and engineers are showing accurate existing site conditions on their survey of existing conditions as required by the Edina City Code, the Minnesota State Building Code, and the Minnehaha Creek watershed. If a condition is not shown, then it never existed. I'm sorry, I should've used larger fonts there. What I've done here is put up a slide. There are two adjacent properties to our home at fifty, in Edina, 5509 Park Place and 5508 Dever Drive, and they're both in the process of being torn down. We have only two neighbors and they're both being torn down right now. My first slide here is a slide of a proposed stormwater management and grading plan at 5509 Park Place, a house that does not require any variances. I'd like to explain a slide. Suddenly, they've come up with a complex drainage system that shows the water, and most of the water sheds from the arrows, as you can see back here down. We've got the water coming up and making a ninety-degree turn, going down the back of the proposed site to the south, and then making another ninety-degree turn, and then going down the south side of the site, which is adjacent to our property, and then going to an infiltration basin where it's supposed to be going to the street. The problem with this, with this proposed survey is that it does not list at all any, there's no gutters, no downspouts, no roof drains, and at this point, a hundred percent of this house is current, all that water from the roof planes is handled by gutters, downspouts, and roof drains. So we don't see any of it. All goes to the street. To construct the filtration basin, the three trees in the front yard are gonna have to be removed. However, at the neighborhood meeting, the builder told us all the trees were staying. On the next slide is the existing drainage plant on the property, which is on file at the city. And it's a very simple plan, and it has worked. Basically, what you see here is the water is split in the back two directions. Half goes along the north side of the property, and half comes to a catch basin and drain tile. Here's the catch basin, and then it goes down along the drain tile, and it comes out at the front of the house. Again, this is our house here. And this is, this, the city had these people put this in in 1997, and it's worked just perfectly for us. I mean, we haven't had any impact from this. The problem here is that suddenly, and here's this, here's the catch basin, and here's the exit for the drain tiles, which goes to the street. She's got them covered, had them covered by hosta. The problem is that none of this is shown on the survey of existing conditions. And again, if a condition is not shown, then it just never existed. And this is one of the reasons why we feel it's really important that there be site visits, and again, at the work session, this was not talked about. This, this plan in place, again, all of the roof drains in the back, and the two buried stump pumps, all come out and exit here on this, as shown here in this photo. This is the proposed lower level of the house to be built, and it shows the two, I've dotted the outline of the, there's two egress windows, and there's no coordination between the building plans and the drainage and grading plans. So what's shown on the, on the building plan is not shown at all on the grading and drainage plan, and this, these, these egress windows are concrete, and that's going to interfere with any, anything coming along the side of the house.
Mr. Groetz?
Yes.
If you could just wrap up, I'm happy to give you a little latitude.
Sure.
We don't have a long line of people waiting to make comments, so...
Right.
But we do need to move along.
Okay. This, this is an example of another item. This is 5508 Dever. You look at those retaining walls, they're not shown on the site, the survey of existing conditions. Here's some additional stuff not shown on the survey. And if they're not shown on the survey, when the city engineer gets the plans, he doesn't see them. He thinks there's nothing there, and therefore, he doesn't have to worry about it. These are some additional photos of retaining walls. We feel that it's important that the engineering department go out and do a site visit on these properties before they're torn down to discover all this, because the surveyors are simply not listing them on the, on the survey of existing conditions, and in many cases, on the survey of proposed conditions. So therefore, we're not getting, we're not getting the whole truth from these people. And in our case, the city engineer is going to be coming out to our property and looking at this, and we feel it's best off if the, if the process takes a little bit more time at the front end, and have the engineering department get involved to prevent problems in the neighboring properties after the house is built. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Groetz. If you could share that with staff, I think that would be appreciated too, the pictures and materials that you provided. I think that would be helpful.
Will do.
This is, of course, a topic that we spent the last hour and a half talking about in a work session, and I know, Mr. Groetz, that you were there as well, and I appreciate your continued participation in this process. And I know we on the Planning Commission are gonna be working to, to continue to monitor this and, and see what, if anything, we can be doing with our codes to help with the situation. Is there other comment from members of the public during community comment?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is John Crabtree, owner and resident of 5408 Oaklawn Avenue here in Edina. Some brief comments this evening. I was at the work session as well. Comment got raised about how much material is, fifty cubic yards of material. It's not very much indeed. If you think of an area fourteen-foot square, fourteen-foot square by seven-foot deep, that's roughly thirteen-hundred-and-fifty cubic feet, or fifty cubic yards. So if you wanna add the footprint, and you dig down into the ground, of fourteen-foot by fourteen-foot by seven-feet-deep is a fifty cubic yard hole. Almost every house will do a major remodel in Edina. Unless we're going up on the existing foundation, we'll require that. I was very interested this evening in Mr. Bittner's, his review process. I think it's a very good thing. This thing is now becoming more public. One thing which I do wish to put on the public record this evening is that the requirements of the state building code are not part of his review process right now. And specifically, that is Section IRC 401 dot three of the International Residential Building Code 2006, and that is incorporated into the Minnesota State Building Code, and then it is effectively incorporated into the city building code. That needs to be incorporated into the review process and part of the interpretive process as well. And forthwith. I don't know if you want me to talk to the staff any further about this, but I wanna be on the public record as having stated that. Then, moving on to a subject which is fairly close to my heart, the whole question of drainage. Commissioner Platterer raised the issue this evening. He said, well, people are having issues, you know, after teardowns of water getting into basements, probably on adjacent properties. And there's two parts to this. One, why is that happening? And two, we'll come back to it. So, and the second part of it, and we'll come back to the first part, is what is the review process the engineering department goes through to ensure that drainage, that grading is actually done as per their approved plan? Diagonally behind me at 5413 Kellogg Avenue is a house which was recently done by teardown. And I go back to here, Mr. Teague, in his packet, basically said, some people, I think, basically make complaints, it's the bottom of page three, top of page four, make complaints about grading, you know, and it may well change during the process. I pointed out my concerns to the city building official during the process. I then went back to him on July 10th and said, the grading is now finished, and it does not comply with the program, with the, with the, the plan as built. Specifically, there were swales to the north of the house and the south side of the house, which are the sides, and also to the rear, which were designed to grade water to the street. The swales on the south and the north sides don't exist. The swell does not exist at the backside, which means that more water drains, drains on a steeper piece of ground than drained before. And on the south side, the situation frankly is utterly horrible, because you've got two downspouts on the south side of a house. It's five feet from the property line. The water drops. The water then slopes away from the foundation of this new house, but then falls onto flat ground, seven feet away from the foundation of the adjacent house. And then you start to wonder why there are problems. I'm not quite sure if a certificate of occupancy has been issued for 5413 Kellogg, but there is, there is something going adrift here in the process, where we're not making sure that, that grading plans are being built as per plan. Now, whether this grading plan would've worked, I don't know, but all I know specifically is that the swales, which were shown there on the plan, were not there. And to me, certificate of occupancy should not have been issued. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Other comments from members of the public during community All right, seeing none, I'd take a motion to close community comment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Community comment is closed. We'll now move to the next portion of the agenda, which is reports and recommendations. We have four items this evening, the first of which is Living Streets Plan Update. I understand Mr. Mark Nolan is here with us to make a presentation. Welcome, Mr. Nolan.
Okay, thank you Chair Staunton, Commissioners, for having me in tonight. Commissioners Platterer and Carr asked me to come in and give an update on the Living Streets process. Again, I'm Mark Nolan, Transportation Planner for the city, and wanted to give you an update on the implementation plan for Living Streets. Now, most of you should be familiar with the Living Streets policy, perhaps not all of you, but the plan is the implementation tool for that policy. And so we'll give you a brief update on that plan this evening. So briefly, some of the items that I'll be discussing with you. Briefly go over the benefits of Living Streets, talk about the process to date, where we've been, where we are, where we're going, and we will discuss how the plan, some of the thoughts about how the plan might work within the city's policies and processes, and then look at some of the plan content, and really what the meat of the plan, what I might call the meat of the plan, is what was included in your packet tonight. It's chapters three and four, the street types and design guidelines. We'll talk about that as well. So as I stated, many of you may be familiar with the overall policy and principles of the Living Streets policy, but I did wanna go over for, for you Commissioners and for anyone who might be listening, what some of the benefits of Living Streets might, might be and actually are. And safety is really a key benefit there. Living Streets fosters safe travel for everyone and encourages a mix of uses that really makes the streets very vibrant, and at all hours of the day or throughout the day, gets eyes on the street. And in addition to some of the safety aspects with, that are involved with, you know, sidewalks and bike, bike facilities, those are some of the other safety benefits. There are public health and environmental benefits as well. Living Streets allow residents to integrate physical activity into their daily routine. They can result in better air and water quality, and then lower greenhouse gas emissions. Transportation choice is a key benefit of Living Streets. It support, Living Streets support multiple ways of getting around, including driving, biking, walking, and using transit. And these transportation options result in a more accessible city for people of all ages and abilities. Economic benefits associated with Living Streets include that they have, it's been demonstrated that public investment in Living Streets elements can actually attract new jobs, businesses, and increase sales for merchants, and can really have a positive influence on property values. And one item that makes Living Streets perhaps a little bit different than complete streets is community identity. Living Streets incorporates placemaking principles that, that features, facilitate social interaction. People are proud of their streets. The idea of Living Streets is that people can identify with their streets and how they can reflect the unique character of their neighborhoods. So a quick update on the process. The policy was approved about this time last year by council, and since then, or since September, I've been meeting monthly with two advisory groups. One made up of internal staff, and then another advisory group made up of members of our boards and commissions. And Commissioners Platterer and Carr are on our advisory group and still serve on that group. And we've, we've been embarking on, and soon we'll be wrapping up a branding and marketing campaign, which resulted in a logo. They'll have a new website, some print materials, and some other items about residents telling stories that you'll all be seeing shortly, at least in the, in the coming weeks. And then, and also embarking on drafting the plan outline, which was included in your packet, and then also the, the chapters. All the chapters of the plan also included in the outline, in the, in the packet are in various stages of, of completion. But again, tonight we'll focus on street types and design guidelines. We did have a work session, the advisory group did, with council on July 1st, and that went really well. We had very positive comments from council, and we'll go over some of those in a minute. The ETC also gave us input on, on essentially what's in front of you right now on July 17th, and now we're here in front of you today for the same. So the next steps for Living Streets is we will complete the chapter drafts, and essentially, complete the drafts of the plan this summer and into fall. We'll get public input in the fall, and improve the sidewalk facilities map, which is a component of chapter four. That will be approved ahead of the Living Streets planning process, and we'll tell you why in, in just a minute. But council, hopefully, will approve that plan in October, and then we'll come to the Planning Commission at a public hearing to be amended in the comprehensive plan sometime in November, and then goes back to council after that. And then by the end of the year, the plan is to approve the, the Living Street, Living Streets plan in, in the whole. So the, the question that I believe it was Commissioner Platterer brought up initially when we were looking at planning the work session with council, and trying to figure out what we really wanted, what input we wanted from them, was how does the plan actually work? What, how does it work within the processes of the city? And so is that, is it, does it wanna function as guidelines that illustrate a set of desired outcomes? Are we looking at actual changes to city code, or incorporating the plan into city code, or both? And really, the feedback that we got, and Commissioners, you can, you can let me know if you have other thoughts on this too, but that the Living Streets plan is kind of a hybrid, and it would be referenced in cities, city code and ordinances. So it would be, it would be part of the process through reference in other code and ordinances.
So it'd be referenced in like the comp plan or something?
Correct.
Right, yeah. As part of the comp plan update, or even amendment right now, to include
Chapter three talks about...
If I could just stop for a second on that point, and I was gonna mention this later, but I think we've got, Carrie, is it a public hearing scheduled for the potential amendment of the comp plan to include the Living Streets policy?
Yes, I might ask Mark to help me out. I believe we have set the, the date for the public hearing that the Planning Commission would...
The date was set for, I believe it was September 10th, but that was then polled, because we decided we needed more time to get the plan ready.
Okay.
So that, and we did, it was polled, and we took care of that. I believe it was in your absence, Director Teague, but so that has to move to October.
I had seen that there was a public, a notice of a public hearing that we were gonna be acting on, and I didn't know anything about it, and...
Right.
People were asking, and...
So if we did put the notice in the paper, we may have to have it on the agenda and then continue it?
Yeah, that's probably right.
If it's been published, we'll have to do that.
Because some people may have seen it, and they'll come, and we'll just need to explain to them unless they're watching tonight.
Would that go to, would that go to the Planning Commission before council then? So it would have, so sometime this fall, or not too far in advance, or too far, too late from now, we would see that, right?
Yes, as a conference of plan amendment, you would make recommendation to the city council.
And that's the sidewalk plan we're talking about, right?
Yes.
So the sidewalk portion of the Living Streets policy is gonna be converted to a plan that would become part of the comprehensive plan?
That's right.
All right. So at some point, we'll need to have a public hearing on that.
Yeah, so if I could take a little bit, so part of, part of, part of the reason for the sidewalk plan is just like we have a street plan for the city, and what will be built or intend to be built, or what exists, the reason for the sidewalk plan would also be that. So in other words, that would be where the city would wanna get to, or what would they wanna recommend as, as street gets rebuilt, or things change. Here's the ultimate sidewalk plan that the city would, is, is looking at. So to publish those guidelines in advance, before each street may come up, that, you know, have these guidelines for this street desires to get one sidewalk on it, or whatever that may be. So it's a, it's a, just like we have a streets plan for the city, would be a similar like for sidewalk plan. I don't know if you wanna add on to that, Mark?
No, that's, that's correct. The council expressed a desire to have an approved sidewalk plan in place as we move into our 2015 neighborhood reconstruction project. So that, that's why they wanted to pull this out at this time, given that the Living Streets plan as a whole, well, may be complete by the end of the year. Approvals may not happen going into 2015, so this is why they requested to pull it.
All right, very good. Sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
Yeah, that's okay. So chapter three, draft street types. And this is basically the Living Streets network, and each street type is defined in, in that chapter. And we have four street types that more or less align with the functional classification of roadways that are defined in the comprehensive plan with one addition. So we have local streets, local connectors, which could be viewed as a subset of local streets, collector streets, and minor arterial streets. And we aren't, so the black lines in the map, we're not talking about highways, we're just talking about minor arterials. And then we'll go over briefly what each of these streets means, but the idea is to break these up by type, and so they each have different characteristics, and each street type has a varying array of, of tools and things that could be used depending on context. And I would like to say that the local streets, and that does not include local connectors, still comprise about two-thirds of all the streets in Edina. So Edina still is, their focus really is still on our local streets and our neighborhood streets. About sixty-three percent of our streets are local. So quickly, looking at the proposed cross-sections for each street type. Before you is the local street. Again, the majority of our streets are local streets, and these are streets that are characterized by traffic that are under a thousand vehicles a day, and that are classified as local streets in the comprehensive plan. And some of the items that you can see here, and I'll be quick and answer questions when we're, when we're finished here, but the idea is that the Living Streets policy that's approved calls for looking for opportunities to narrow our streets. And with local streets and like, and also local connectors, we are looking at ways to narrow the streets down to, in this case, a twenty-four-foot street section, if there's a sidewalk, twenty-seven feet if there's not a sidewalk. And we're going through this process right now and looking at our neighborhoods for next year. We've got positive feedback from council and the Transportation Commission on this. And the idea is that parking would be limited to one side of those streets if they're twenty-four feet wide. We don't see a lot of demand for two-side parking in our neighborhoods. So that's something that, that the Living Streets plan is recommending. And again, sidewalks are optional, but there are a set of criteria that were in the plan that would dictate when sidewalks would become required. And those required sidewalks will be also reflected in the sidewalk plan that will come in front of the commission in October.
So just to interrupt briefly, Mark, you know, for instance, in my neighborhood where there aren't sidewalks and the streets are pretty wide, people rely on the width of the street for walking in the street and sharing it with traffic. If you're gonna narrow the streets, what circumstances would we narrow the streets without having then sidewalks?
The, the difference would be, is that if, if there are no sidewalks, the street would be twenty-seven feet wide. So most of our streets are thirty feet wide, so that is three feet narrower. But we could limit parking to one side. And so that, and that's, we're still wrestling, you know, wrestling with some of these things, and the idea that many of the streets that we reconstruct and have the last couple of years are all, are twenty-seven feet wide, and we park them on both sides. The idea is that if we could limit parking to one side, then you still have that extra room for non-motorized users of the street, bikes and pedestrians.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Local connectors, local connectors are going to look almost identical to local streets. They're just, local connectors are a different subset, and the definition has been clarified a little bit more than, than what is in the packet. Local connectors are local streets that have to meet at least one of these two criterias. One, an ADT, or an average daily traffic of one thousand vehicles or more per day. And then also serves as a connection between, or, or serves as a connection between neighborhoods, destinations, and higher-level roadways, which I believe is in the document. And staff has been going through the plan and looking at what those street types are, and they, they pretty much correspond to the local connector, street types that are on the map. So these are streets that have a, a local street character to them, but they just, they serve more, there's more activity that happens on them, and certainly more traffic. And so the idea with local connectors, it has a similar cross-section, it's twenty-four feet wide, but a sidewalk is required on at least one side of the street. Because of that increased activity, because it is, typically serves as connections to and through neighborhoods and destinations.
[Inaudible] question.
Mm-hmm.
Throughout this entire discussion, and as I'm looking at the classification of Living Streets map, are we trying, these are designated as they are currently used and monitored, so when we're talking about less or more than a thousand cars per day, et cetera, et cetera, we're, we're just designating them based on how people are using them today? We are not trying, I mean, the idea of the plan would not be to try to influence this in any way? Just simply accept it as it exists?
We, are you, you're referring to the, the street network plan, and whether or not certain streets should be...
In the designation of...
certain streets should be included or not be included?
And designation, right.
We've been, this, it's a very, and Commissioners Platter and Carr can speak to this, it's a very fluid, um, plan. It's definitely still a working plan, so we've been receiving comments for several months on looking at certain streets and whether they should, they should or should not be included, so that's a process. We're still looking for input on those as well.
My, my thought is, we have some streets, as things have occurred in terms of commercial business development outside of even our community, we have areas of town that are beginning to become much more heavily utilized, as commuters discover that I don't want to stay on the highway and look for that exit, it's much easier for me to zip around through Edina and, and do this. And it strikes me that we could control some of that traffic if we chose to, in terms of, uh, uh, different types of lights, stoplights, in terms of different types of stop signs, making areas a little less attractive as a pass-through. We've got some areas that are getting very, very heavily trafficked. I, I spent this evening, now partly that's because of a highway detour that's going on, but I drove from Creek Valley Elementary School to this building, and it took me 40 minutes to get there on Vernon Avenue. I don't think that's acceptable in our community, if it, if it were to continue when we're done with 169, you know, construction, I think the city should be doing something to try to discourage that amount of traffic. So my question really is, are we just designing this the way it exists? Or are we, could we take an opportunity to say, we'd like to change a few of these? You know, we don't want quite so many collectors, for example, because a lot of that is passed through traffic. And, and we might be able to do some things to manage that traffic and to discourage that some of these streets are collectors.
Sure. And again, the, the collector designation corresponds with, with the functional classification, and some of the things you're talking about, I think, could fall into the realm of traffic calming. I think we found, and I also, on the Traffic Safety Committee, and we deal with a lot of traffic safety requests, and sidewalks, and lights, and, and things like that, and we get a lot of those requests. And we have found that there are sometimes when traffic, when stop signs and those kinds of things are effective, and sometimes when they're not. And so I think that is certainly on the table. We can look at including a, a broader range of, of traffic calming techniques. There are other ways of, of, for instance, like a bike boulevards, where you're, you're trying to make a street more friendly for bike users than, than for cars, by putting in traffic circles and things like that. So those are the kinds of things I think might fall into that category.
Yes, I would just like to argue for taking an opportunity to look at this, if this is a drawing of life as we have begun to know it, and it's changed in the last five to 10 years, and say, is, is that what we want it to look like? And are there things we can do to influence it?
Anything else? Thank you. Collector streets, we were just talking about those. Again, it's as defined in the comprehensive plan, these streets carry a, a much more traffic, and, and for the most part, our collector streets are generally two lanes wide, sometimes there are turn lanes, sometimes there aren't. So there's a variety of roadway widths now, as we, as we get to collectors and minor arterials that will happen, depending on the, the traffic, how much traffic we have to accommodate, whether there are turn lanes, medians, and again, we're pretty flexible here, the, the plan is flexible in terms of parking as well. That all depends on context, whether there's demand for parking on both sides, one side or zero side. But one thing that, that, a couple of things here that with collector streets, one, again, sidewalks, according to the plan, are required on one side of the street, that's also in the, the approved Living Streets policy. And then also, most, I believe over 90% of our collectors are bike routes on our current bicycle plan. So the idea is that bicycle lanes would be incorporated in collectors and also on minor arterials. We won't, generally won't see bike lanes, according to the current plan, dedicated bike lanes on the local streets or on local connectors. It's just not, they're, right now, most of our routes aren't on those streets. There could be other types of facilities on those streets, and the, the bike section we're still working through right now, the county is working on their bike plan, and we're waiting for input from them on their bike plan to see what types of facilities we could be looking at. But right now, we're looking at the collector streets and minor arterial streets with bicycle facilities that's dedicated bike lanes, or we've begun to start looking at other types of facilities, like protected bike lanes and, and cycle tracks and things like that. So we're still looking at that. Minor arterials, again, wider streets carry more traffic, and sidewalks are required on both sides of those streets. Many of our arterials already do have sidewalks on both sides, but certainly not all of them. And so, again, that is contained, that requirement is also in the approved policy.
Mark, can I ask a question? Sorry to interrupt, but, so you're saying that this is kind of reflecting what's already in the comp plan with the definitions of the minor arterial and collector? Can, are you, can you explain what's being changed with this? Or has nothing changed with what's already in the comp plan with your, what you're showing with the sidewalks required and?
Yeah, these requirements are not in the comp plan, as, as far as the sidewalks go, but the, but the functional classification of the streets, the way we, what, essentially what we call them and how they function, that's the same that's in the comprehensive plan, with the addition of that local connector, which is a subset of the local streets.
And then, so within the comp plan, when they define the minor, minor arterial, do they already have some definitions on lane widths and sidewalks? They don't have anything?
No.
They just define that that's a, that's as far as, I was trying to do that online before I came today, and I got a little lost with where it was, but, so it just defines the-
It does.
And that's all it says, and just a map, and this is, really?
Yeah, that's why we have this.
Wow.
We're going on.
Sorry. Wow. Okay, thank you. So all this is new, so this is all, good.
It is, yeah.
All right.
Hey, Mark, I just have a question on that, if you go back a slide. So when, and mainly these streets would be updated when there's roadwork anyway, right? You wouldn't necessarily go through and blow in a bike lane necessarily, right? I mean, it's when these roads get rebuilt, it'd want to be like this, correct?
That's right, and that'll be written into the implementation plan as well. When opportunities arise, so local streets typically are when we do our neighborhood reconstruction projects, when our state aid roads come up for reconstruction, we have to follow state aid guidelines, but we can still, these, these items fit within those guidelines, so that's correct.
Yeah, so my point is, this will be a very gradual thing as things evolve, right? So it, it won't be like we're going to go tear up all these streets to put this in just because it's, they're already slated for something else, right?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Kerr?
We've had a few developments come before us, and there's sidewalks built into the design, and the building is so far from the sidewalk, and, but in some instances, there have been tree, there haven't been trees on what you were describing as the minimum five-foot boulevard. Instead, they've put the trees next to the building. And I think that, you know, a key element of Living Streets is to have trees on a boulevard. That's between the street and the sidewalk. It gives the pedestrian a feeling of comfort not being right up against the traffic, so, you know, we should keep that in mind when developers come before us, and even though it's not been introduced yet into the comp plan, it's certainly something we're considering, and if they're coming to us for variances or sketch review plans, et cetera, we should give them that input.
Yeah, I wanted to say, and I'm glad you picked up on that, I saw that too, and I was pleased to see that, and that is sort of the goal. That sort of gives you that definition of, of the zone of what's, what's traffic, and now you're getting into the more pedestrian zone, and to pull all the trees next to the building almost makes it, extends the feel of the road right up to that tree line, so, yeah, I noticed that too.
And that, and that's part of him coming in sooner than later, because as we go through these things, I, I thought everyone, or we thought everyone should know about this to start implementing this, you know, as we go along, so, you know, and catch it earlier than later. Sorry, Michael.
That's okay.
That, that's fine. Mark, I wanted to ask, and we can look at this cross-section here that shows a minor, minor arterial, and we could also look back at the collector. When you go through this cross-section, just do a little simple math, you see you have a five-foot boulevard and a five-foot walk, both as minimums, we have the space outside that we say is variable. And in my mind, that variable, which in this cross-section, if you do the math, and you assume the road is centered within the right-of-way, you end up with seven feet of extra space, which would be much better directed, not in the varies category, but either in the walk, or especially in the boulevard, because I'm not even sure that many of our minor arterials are Hennepin County roadways, and I'm not even sure that minimum five-foot boulevard would support a tree according to the current Hennepin County standards. Now, they're changing those, or they're working to change them, as I understand it, but it seems like if we have extra space, rather than putting on the property side, we should be redirecting it back towards the benefit of either the boulevard, or the sidewalk, or both. And I think this could apply both in the minor arterial category and in the collector arterial. In the collector, we have just three feet of extra, but even taking that three feet and putting it back in the boulevard would do a lot to help support the tree growth that we want to have there. And, and even within that, I think there are still some structural issues with trying to get a tree to grow in an eight-foot boulevard without having some extra effort putting into either some, some kind of soil volume modifications through CU soils, or Swedish soils, or silvacells, something else to promote the growth of trees, even in an eight-foot zone. And, and I didn't see that addressed, and there are a lot, I'll, I'll come back and talk about some other concerns I have, but when we look at this one cross-section, that's the part that concerns me, is we have this variable width, and we could actually use that better back in board of the sidewalk, or in, in board of where the sidewalk meets the property.
Thanks, Commissioner Schrader, that's a very good point. We've started talking about some of these things internally as well, as we start to develop the, because the street trees in the boulevard is going to be part of the, the toolbox here, it's, it's kind of in there right now, and even for traffic calming, because it, you know, they do, it does calm traffic as well. But as we develop the stormwater management and sustainable infrastructure section, some of those things are going to be discussed, and, and you're correct, there's, there's a lot of room behind the sidewalk, and an example where we have an 80-foot right-of-way, we don't always have 80 feet for our, our collectors even, or even some of our minor arterials. But I think that one would argue that a much better use of that space would be to increase the boulevard, and, so that's a very good point. All right, just briefly touching on the structure of the design guidelines, I'm not going to get into detail on each of these sections, because we can talk about specific questions, but there's a section on vehicular facilities, so dealing strictly with travel ways and, and lane widths and, and organization. The section on pedestrian facilities looks at sidewalks, crosswalks, pedestrian crossings. There are, there's a section on bicycle facilities, which I said again, is fairly comprehensive, but we are looking at, we kind of, I wouldn't call it on hold, but we do want to see what's coming out of the county's process, because they have a lot of, a lot to say in terms of bicycle planning that we want to work with them with. And we've referenced the traffic calming section again, graphic to the right just kind of shows all the traffic calming measures, and then how and when they may be applied in the draft plan. And again, the stormwater management section, which is in early stages, but is going to be fleshed out here more in the next couple of weeks. And one of the focuses of this section, and certainly of staff right now, and as we've been talking about this evening, are the sidewalk maps. Now, these sidewalk maps, draft sidewalk facilities, the plan that will come to council and the Planning Commission will look a little bit different, because it's something that goes in the comprehensive plan and just focuses on sidewalks. This document focuses on all the pedestrian travel ways, I guess. So we've got sidewalks and trails, both regional and local, existing and proposed. And so the, the sidewalk map started with the sidewalk map that we currently have in our 2008 comprehensive plan, and then on top of that was layered the draft Living Streets network requirements that we've been talking about. So those required sidewalks on those street types, based on that street network plan that you saw earlier, that was overlaid onto this as well. The council, a couple of months back, approved the active routes to school plan, so those sidewalks, they're purple on the maps, that gets special designation as well, and those sidewalks, in terms of implementation, have a higher priority that staff has decided, given that they're in an approved plan and they deal with active routes to school. There's also different funding sources for those sidewalks potentially. And, and again, we talked about approving the sidewalk facilities maps prior to the Living Streets Plan. I've had a workshop internally with staff and a couple of ETC members this week, the sidewalk maps that you see have been revised since then, so we have, we're drilling down for each sidewalk piece and looking at ways to make sure they meet the criteria that are in the plan. So we've got traffic counts, we have, you know, origins destinations in terms of where the sidewalks are, why they're in the plan, so that, that information will, is still being fleshed out, and will be borne out in what you see next. Questions about the sidewalk plan, or anything else?
Well, there, there are three things, and I've, I've raised this before, actually, there's, one of these is actually parts of, of the same thing. I think to really push the idea of Living Streets, we need to get beyond the physical plan and look at how it's perpetuated, how it's maintained. Did the committee talk about the maintenance implications of Living Streets? Because if we don't clear sidewalks of snow, or if we don't continually sweep bike lanes, bike lanes are notorious for collecting the debris that gets swept to the curb, swept towards the curb by just the movement of traffic. We're not really facilitating safe movement in multimodal streets. I think we could also get to the same point about street trees, and we show them here, we talk about them, but there is a maintenance cost to those that I don't know is addressed. And it would be good, if we're serious about this as a policy, that we look at it both in terms of the physical infrastructure within the right-of-way, and also how we perpetuate that outside of just clearing snow within the drive lanes, which seems to be the, the focus for public works, but I think we need to expand that. I think the other part of this, and it falls back to us, is that this deals with a physical infrastructure within the right-of-way, but it, it neglects the idea that, if you take France Avenue, for instance, and we've worked, we've been working on France Avenue, that there's still a need to connect front doors of facilities to the sidewalk, so that people can actually use them. And as we look at it, as it was going to our comprehensive plan process, we ought to be pushing for the idea of making connections between the public realm and extending that sense of a public realm up to the front doors of buildings. And I don't know how that falls into a Living Streets policy, because it doesn't deal within the right-of-way any longer. And I think it also gets to kind of a, a corollary to that, is we seem to have a penchant for suggesting that buildings be pulled up to the street, and we like to see that, but then you can walk past buildings like the TD Ameritrade that says, "Don't use this door," even though it's the one at the street that we pushed so hard to get. So I think we, as we move forward in our process, we need to be diligent about how this ties into the land use recommendations, and even be much more serious about how we define when buildings should be pulled up to the street, and if it's even really a good idea in some cases.
Could I address just what you just talked about? Regarding maintenance, that is, I wouldn't call it the elephant in the room, but we all realize that it's an issue, especially given our climate, and the Public Works Department, including Director Olson and others, have been involved with this process, and every time, we've been talking about sidewalks, and we're very, very upfront with them, it's just, we're, we're, we want to put in more sidewalks, this is what, you know, can you handle it? You know, because sidewalks on our state aid roads are, are maintained by, by the city, and so we have to make sure that we look at maintaining the level of service that we have now as best we can. It's a pretty high level of service, and we may go from 48 hours to 72 hours, you know, to clear some of those routes. So that's, we've been talking about that, talking about ways to fund additional equipment that may be necessary, which may come out of the PAX fund or some other source, so that's a very good point. And then also, clearing bike facilities is, is something that I've been personally trying to come up with a plan of attack for. Part of, when the city was awarded the bronze level Bike Friendly Community Award, part of that is they give you this entire laundry list of what it would take to get a silver instead of a bronze, and those types of things are on there, and we're, we're trying to get those into our work plan. And then talking about connectivity guidelines, that, what you were just speaking to, we are going to be included in Chapter Six, and it'd be great, obviously, to get input from this group, and certainly from Commissioners Platter and Carr and the advisory group, on how that might be fleshed out in terms of looking for ways to connect to and through private developments and also our parks. I'm meeting with Director Cattrie next week to talk about the park master planning process and how that wraps into Living Streets, so that hopefully will be borne out in that That's the end of the presentation, so we can continue with discussion.
Thank you, Mark. Other questions for Mr. Nolan? One comment I would just follow up on, kind of following up on Commissioner Shearer's comments about the, the difference between what we have and what we'd like to have. We should be cognizant, as we move along on this, on kind of parallel planning tracks. So for instance, when you look at Vernon Avenue, which is part of a minor arterial, and the width of the street that you illustrate- and the width of the street that you illustrate on Vernon, one of the things we did in the Grand View framework that was unanimously adopted by the council in 2012 is talked about narrowing Vernon up in that Grand View area so that right now, as you go west to east, the road, the road is two lanes, and then as it narrows, it broadens out to four lanes, which doesn't slow the traffic like you'd like to see it happen. And we actually have some illustrations in the framework talking about how to reduce the vehicle travel to two lanes with bike lanes and then sidewalks as well to make that a more friendly, pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly, and more permeable so that people on one side of Vernon who want to get to the commercial area on the other side without driving there are able to do that. And so that, I suspect, you know, we may run into that at Valley View and Wooddale as you're working your way through that small area plan, as we do other small area plans. And so we just ought to be making sure that we're taking into account other places in our planning process where we've said we'd like to see this street look different.
That's a very good point. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner Olson?
Just a quick couple of questions, kind of following up with Commissioner Schroder. So, and then just your comment here on the front page where that the council and the Transportation Commission is saying that this should be referenced by city code and ordinance. So are you looking, have we already said that that's what we agreed to? Are you looking for kind of some of that direction from us too, that we want this to have a little bit more teeth and to be applied?
That's the kind of input we're looking for, yeah. But part of the plan, because it's an implementation plan, those recommendations as to how that would happen would be in the plan itself, so.
Okay. And then, so then as part of that, should we be looking at how we, you know, do you want to define that public realm connection and how do we, you know, I guess I'm just trying to put this together, like, when do we actually do that and how do we, would that then become part of this policy that would be referenced by city code or?
Ideally, it would.
Yeah, sure. Good question. I mean, we, in very recent meetings, I think we found ourselves on just the topic that we were talking a minute ago about what kind of standards do we want for when you're supposed to pull a building close to the curb and if you do, or close to the property line, and if you do, you know, it's more than just pulling the building up. What is, you know, how do we prevent the door that says, "Go in anywhere but here?" Or, "No doors at all," which we've found, or other things that just don't make it a welcoming kind of environment. And I think that's a real, seems to me that's the transition between the street and what we, I mean, we kind of deal with this in applications all the time where we're dealing with not really the street, but how you go in and out of the property and where that seam is between the public and the private realm. So to your question, Commissioner Olson, how do we go about?
Right. Do we do it first? I mean, do we talk about this and then send you some of our recommendations or is it something your group works on and then we respond to it?
I think it's something we could work on. We could talk about a work session might be an idea if we felt that that was something we'd want to do in the next couple of months. I'm just thinking of this right now. Otherwise, the input from Commissioners Carr and Platter, you know, that's where you could play a big role in that. I don't know if you facilitate that here and bring those comments back. That's.
I think it's.
We try.
Well, we do get regular updates, you know, from Commissioners Platter and Carr, but I think this is an important enough and a regular enough occurrence in front of us that a work session where we kind of tried to figure out how to dovetail with this would really be a smart.
It's more than a work session, I'm guessing.
Right. It'll take longer than that, but I think the beginnings of it are that kind of conversation, right, where you can get around the table and kind of brainstorm a little bit about.
We could talk about timing and making sure that we have content ready in the work session.
Commissioner Forrest?
It seems like a lot of these measures could benefit from a lot of education of the public and especially the commercial owners as Commissioner Schroder and others have commented as far as how they respond to our saying, "We want connectivity with the streets." It's, we can talk till we're blue here, but then how is it going to be implemented? I'm wondering, I think about the Energy and Environment Commission and all the public education that's been there, that they've been doing over the last few years on different issues. This might fall under, you know, be a good public education thing for the Transportation Commission, perhaps, if they wanted to take something like this on, at least to help get some of these messages and also explain this whole, this whole framework of ideas to people so they have a better understanding of, you know, when we're coming in, throwing a sidewalk in on your street, this is why we're doing it, or roundabout or whatever. Because I'm, I mean, I think I find it very, very interesting, but I also, you know, the concepts, if I hadn't been on this commission, would have been completely new to me at one point. So I think it's outstanding and I just want more people to know about it.
Thanks.
All right. Other comments or questions? So where do we go from here? You're continuing your work. We're not scheduled to have a formal public hearing on September 10th, although we may have to list it on the agenda and continue it. If anyone is watching and thinking about coming to the public comment or the public hearing on September 10th, I think you can rest assured that we'll be continuing that to a date in the future. And I assume Commissioners Platter and Carr will be continuing to work along with the living streets work group and reporting back in. And I think it would be a good idea for us to schedule some kind of a work session, Carrie, at some future point. Maybe we can talk about that in the context of our work plan discussion that's coming up next.
Yes, and see if you have specific comments, you could direct them to Commissioner Carr and myself and, you know, integrate into what we're doing, you know, in here as well.
Commissioner Forrest?
Well, it'd be nice to see some of these things or at least kind of intermediate steps taken where the budget allows, the things that aren't major construction projects like restriping. I have a friend who lives about a block or two east of France, and she was saying the traffic on that road changed so remarkably, it's so much better since they restripped it and you don't have those imaginary extra lanes there. And I would love to see a similar thing happen on 50th Street for the same reason, because we have the, you know, the afternoon rush hour extra lane going east. So, yeah, I think it'd be interesting to kind of, at least as a commission, I'm not sure where we would want to go, but I would like to see us encourage any budget-allowed changes to be done before there's a major, I mean, budget schedule. I know there's a lot of resources involved in these things, but.
Well, the good thing is, is with the pedestrian cycle safety fund, that's, those funds are set aside for pedestrian improvements and sidewalks and also striping associated with bicycle lanes. But wrapped into that is also, and staff has looked, 50th Street is an ongoing issue. We know staff's been talking about that as well and looking for ways to, you know, the Xerxes is going to, the county is going to be taking care of Xerxes from 66 all the way to 54th in terms of some striping and some bump outs here coming up. So, you know, that's the type of thing that we could be looking at.
Commissioner Carr?
The other thing is too, we have these large developments coming to us, or large projects, and we always get a report on traffic, but we don't really get anything having to do with the streets. And sometimes we do, from the engineer, I believe, get some indication of what's happening with the streets as a result of that project, but it's not always clear to me. You know, we don't really have a concept of whether or not the living street designs, which is new, of course, is being incorporated into that. So I don't know, it's just something to think about, whether, in addition to just a traffic study report, we also have something from transportation indicating how the streets are going to be developed in connection with this project, and that would reflect the living streets principles.
And certainly if there's a, if there's a plan in the comprehensive plan to change it from a, you know, a collector to something less intensive or more intensive in the future, we would want to know about that as we're, as we're considering an application that abuts that roadway.
So I guess my recommendation would be, Carrie, maybe next time we have some development come to us, it's large in scale, fairly large in scale. I know we've had some that have come to us in the past and they're probably going to come to us again, the same projects. Maybe we would, could have some kind of a transportation report as well, letting us know, instead of just traffic issues, whether or not the streets can handle it, how the street is going to be designed or is it going to remain the same, and how that fits into the living streets guidelines.
Commissioner Forrest?
It seems like if this, as this goes into policy, that will give it a lot more weight and make it easier for us to say to developers that come forward, "How are you going to handle pedestrian traffic from point A to point B? How are they going to get across this street? You know, is it realistic to expect bicycles to go on that road during rush hour and things like that?" So I like the idea that as this gets more weight to it, it gives us another tool in our tool belt to work with.
Well, it makes it predictable for developers. You can look and see what the plan says this is going to be in the future, and you have to deal with that instead of us saying, "Once they get here, well, and we'd like you to add this because we've just decided." Okay. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate the time and the presentation, and thanks to Commissioners Platter and Carr for all your work on this. We look forward to seeing this thing continue to evolve. And it will be back at some point for a public hearing, and I'll talk with Carrie and we'll talk about times to try and get a work session together.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is our 2015 annual work plan. As you all know, we, for a couple of years now, have been coming up with a work plan every year. This is part of the council and staff's effort to do work plans across the entire city. I know I have attended a couple of city council work sessions where the work plan is discussed with the city council, and it's quite an event when you think about all the different commissions with all their work plans and the amount of things that the city council has to keep track of. It's really, it's daunting. But we have one, Carrie, you've put this in our packet, and if you can kind of remind me of the timeline, when we will be expected to have our 2015 work plan prepared to bring to the council as a proposal?
Yeah, ideally, we'd like to have this completed by the end of September. So if you look at our calendar, that gives us only one more meeting because we've canceled our second meeting in September. So ideally, we'd like to finalize this on September 10. We can do some of it offline through email prior to the 10th if you'd like. What I've provided here this evening is kind of took last year's plan, made some slight revisions. What I'd like to do as far as our zoning ordinance amendment work is look at our ordinance tracker where we have everything listed and see what, what might rise to the top at this time. The two that are on there, well, we'll talk a little bit about the apartments, minimum and maximum size, maybe we can get that done before the end of this year. Parking regulations, that's one that's always been there, kind of towards the top. The policy recommendations, that's, that's the same language that's on the work plan for 2014. Same with the commission liaison activities. The one change that I made on the, on the second page is the small area plan for Cahill and 70th. That's kind of next in line. The council has provided some direction that they'd like to see the planning commission take that on. That, that site is within a TIF district, so there's some monies left over from the previous TIF that we can allocate toward that project. So once we wrap up our 2014 work plan with the Valley View-Wooddale small area plan, that would be the next one in line that we would try to take on probably toward the end of 2015.
And I noticed that the Valley View-Wooddale small area plan is not on here as yet because it's expected to be completed this year.
Yeah, we probably won't complete it this year, but I think we'll get 80% credit, maybe?
We're shooting for January to have it go to council.
So I'd be kind of inclined to keep it on here, just as a way to keep reminding us that, yeah, and there'll be a follow-on to that in 2015, I'm sure, even once you get through that planning process and bring some recommendations, then it's implementation and how to follow up on that. Are there other, other comments? One that I noticed fell off the list was lighting. We had, we were talking. Yeah.
Yeah. The reason I took it off was I'm hoping we're going to get that knocked off in 2014, at least that.
That's the spirit. All right. Optimistic.
Well, although that was just the change in the, wasn't the wattage, whatever.
That's true. That's just step one.
Foot candles, yes, that's right. It was the foot candles only.
Step one.
So that was just a baby step, but so that, but I think that we could have a more comprehensive ordinance on lighting. Most cities do, so I don't think we should take it off the list and we should continue to work on it.
And that would continue under zoning ordinance amendments, A. Is that your suggestion, Commissioner Carr?
Pardon me?
To continue that under item A, zoning ordinance amendments along with the parking regulations and.
Yes.
Okay.
Toby, the third item, I would say target condition date 2015?
Yes.
For the whole thing?
I'm going. I don't know.
Trying to, you know, might as well have a, if we can't get it.
Oh, you dig love this aggression. This is great. Okay.
The other items, you know, we've, we've had the sustainability enforcement, kind of pedestrian friendliness, affordable housing in the PUD context was one of those that was on last year at this time, and we haven't made much progress on that, so that needs to be, I think, a priority for 2015. The tree ordinance is, where is the tree ordinance now? We were going to meet in August with the city council, but that got pushed back.
Yeah, and I apologize, I don't have the exact date, but I believe it is November 3rd. I'll make a reminder for myself to send out a reminder to the commission tomorrow.
So for anyone who's following along at home, we did do a draft tree ordinance. We moved, we had a public hearing, we moved it along to the council. The council had some, some issues with it, and we scheduled a time to have a work session. We took a little further look at it, and then we scheduled a time to have a work session with the council. As these things happen, it's gotten pushed back a bit, so we'll follow up with that in November. And depending on what happens there, that may or may not be on the, continue to be on. Midterm comprehensive plan, Commissioner Schroder was, had done some work on kind of potential scheduling as we got ready for this. That has been kind of tangled up in the Vision 2040. Maybe it's a sign we're all getting older, that our vision is getting worse. It's no longer Vision 2020, it's now Vision 2040. But that process, I know, and I know all the members of the commission here have been invited to visioning sessions on the, is it the 9th and the 11th of September? Wrapped around our 10th of September meeting, just so that if you had anything going that week, you can kind of forget about it. But I'm hoping that the beginning of that process means we can start moving forward on this because, you know, we'll have to have the update completed in 2018, so next year is really the time to be getting started on that. And I know for the 2008 update, we were, we were starting in 2006 for that. Monitoring residential redevelopment standards and ordinance, I think the discussions we had at the work session tonight are a good example of following up on some efforts we made on drainage. I don't know if people think we need to be more specific on that or if we should slice out the drainage work as a separate item. Any thoughts? Commissioner Platter?
Well, I was just going to say, just in general on that, how are, how are we responding to that? Are we, should we be making recommendations from what we heard there today as part of that, or is that kind of a larger effort, or is it something, individual notes put together to, as recommendations? I'm looking for, you know, what's the next step, maybe? I've, I've got a bunch, I'm sure some other people do as well, and how we put that together.
Yeah. How do folks want to do it? Do you want to make that an agenda item at our next meeting? Do you want to talk about it? I mean, in some ways, maybe it's useful to talk about it right now, just capturing the big picture ideas that people may have heard. And then we can follow up, but. And then we can follow up, but, you know, while that discussion is fresh, it might be helpful to get some big picture thoughts down. I do think it almost warrants its own, its own item on the work plan. It's just become high enough profile.
I do like the idea of actually coming up with some recommendations. They look like they would be open to it. And I think we probably all have sort of the same, a lot of the same concerns and probably some of the same suggestions. It might be good to kind of start an email or document going or something, you know, that we could do some of this offline. But I agree that maybe it's worth a quick pass right now to just get some, some general reactions, and then, and then maybe everyone sort of just kind of puts, includes what their thoughts were or additional concerns.
So I would volunteer to take the lead, if you want, to kind of accumulate this, and if folks want to send them to me, I can kind of parse the list.
So I think, I think we need to be a little bit careful about how we go about that.
That's, that was my next comment, you know, or do these all go to Carrie and they get rolled up?
I think that's probably the right approach, is that to the extent we've got follow-up. I guess what I would suggest is, just tonight, we kind of give some big picture thoughts. Carrie can capture those as a start, and then we, I'm sure people will think of other things in the wake of the meeting.
Still send Carrie the list.
And then send Carrie a list, and then you could come back to us at our next meeting with a kind of compilation, and maybe we can manage that into some recommendations.
It would be, it seems like it would be okay that one of us could at least compile the stuff and then send it to Carrie.
Well, it's, I have open meeting log concerns tonight, so the notion of doing it offline, we really don't get to, we kind of have to do it as part of this. We could do it as part of a work session, but we have to get those materials, best way to do that is through staff, and then, and then staff can republish them back out to us, but we shouldn't be.
Staff would be the common.
Right. We can't really be communicating among each other as a group in the interim. That's just kind of.
Well, I'm just saying that we send it to Mike, and he, he takes the things and puts it into one thing, but I don't know if that saves you anything or not, and then it goes to Carrie.
That's what we have staff for.
I'd be glad to do it.
Okay, great.
If you get the same thing five times, you would just put it on there once, so.
Yeah. So I, do people have thoughts now that they want to share? Commissioner Scherer?
Just quickly looking through my notes, there were just some things I was noting. I think it was Susan who brought up the ideas. We were having the discussion that, you know, if we added watershed review of all the site plans as sort of a checklist for the permit or something like that, which apparently many other communities already do, that that would be a simple thing to at least initiate the process and communicate our concern to all builders, you know, regarding how seriously we're going to take this. I like that idea a lot, and it sounds like it's, it's consistent with other practices that they're probably facing in other communities. It wouldn't be a shock or a huge burden to many of the builders. I also liked the discussion that we had about how do you, it was, when Commissioner Forrest brought up the idea of how long-term maintenance of these kinds of things, I liked the idea of some sort of a maintenance declaration that would be required to be on the deed, I believe was the phrase that was used, and starting to implement some sort of a practice like that, because it is the only chance, I think, that we have of documenting what our, what the city's expectation is going forward and would lead into any future actions the city might take to an enforcement. And if it's on the deed, it's not surprising to any landowner or future landowner. It's, it's right there. I was conflicted, and I'd love to hear a fellow commissioner's thoughts about the drainage discussion we had, Chapter 36, Article 12. That, I could see some of the discussion about the reason for more open or, or I might say vague, language. But, but the lack of specificity bothers me in terms of what a builder or even an individual citizen who is developing a home with an architect, it, the idea, I think you used, Mr. Chairman, the phrase, maybe it's an urban legend, you know, that we've, we've defined in our own mind, and staff is sort of trying to implement this idea that you can't increase the drainage. But we're so inspecific about how we would measure that, and we're giving so much latitude to staff, which it's nice that they're willing to accept that accountability, but, but I, it seems that we could be more prescriptive in terms of that section. It, it just doesn't give an applicant a lot of certainty, I guess, as to how their plan would be received. I guess those are the big three for me.
Commissioner Schroeder, thoughts? Commissioner Lee?
I was a little bit bothered by about the idea of creating, what were we calling that? I guess mapping a private infrastructure, attaching that to the property maintenance declaration. In some ways, I think it overcomplicates things, because when you think about it, should that property be torn down again yet in the future? There could be an opportunity where they actually improve that condition, and you might not need that rain garden anymore, and now they're stuck with sort of that requirement. I think that we have to sort of take the broadest approach, and that is to probably do what Nancy suggests, is sort of clarify, what does it mean to bring it to a, a structure and have it empty into a storm sewer? What does that mean? And maybe clarify that more and, and try to do it more through those means. Obviously, there will be times where we will want that opportunity, or the city will, to come up with other types of methods to mitigate sort of some of that drainage on that particular site. But I think that's probably best left if we don't try to get too prescriptive, because I'm, I'm just worried that it will work for that time and place, but now we will forever be left with having to own that, so to speak. So that was my thought on that one. But the other things about the checklist, it just, it seemed pretty apparent that that is the way to go, and it may be worth just sort of investigating, literally doing a search, you know, building permit for many other communities. And I'm saying, like Berkeley, California, I mean, some areas where they're very advanced, see what they do and how, we don't have to recreate it, but I'm sure there's some, just basically, just some basic good suggestions that we could make as the planning commission, and something that the city could react to.
Commissioner Platter?
I've got kind of a long list, but I'll try to summarize it, and I think some of the things have already been stated. So one of the things that I, probably be a spot check on the site surveys, just as kind of some of the things we heard here tonight, is who from engineering is checking on these, or who's checking that what's on the survey is correct? Are we missing things on that? So that somebody visits the site before that. Then city requirement to show a calc on the soil disturbed, that, that was an item that had brought up a couple of times. And then the residential checklist was, you know, how, how are we getting through that? And how was, how do we assure that the watershed district is involved? You know, there may be many other things on that checklist. I mean, for us in the commercial world, we always have a checklist we have to go through to get a commercial permit. I would think residential would be very similar to that. And then probably the biggest thing on the drain water is just, or the storm water is defining, I was surprised how vague it was, too. I mean, that, how that's interpreted and how, you know, state code has a certain thing on it also, but how do we, how do we define that? And that's causing, I think, a huge amount of issues in our community as that storm water is, is coming onto adjacent properties. And again, each of these seem to be treated as an island and not of how they affect the surrounding properties, which may be an opportunity to also there. And I heard coordinating inspections across the city, who's going out to the site, when? What are they looking at? Does this cover all three pieces of the city, from the planning to the building to the engineering? How does that get combined? I think those are probably the biggest ones. But I do appreciate the city and, you know, Ross, a lot of the things that Ross is doing and going through and looking at these, that never existed until very, this summer. I mean, we saw some in here, but I think that's a great step in the right direction, and I, I think we can, we can always do better, but I think that's definitely trending right there. So those are my overall comments. Thanks.
Commissioner Forrest.
To add on what Commissioner Scherer was saying regarding the vagueness of the language in Section, whatever, Chapter 12 or whatever.
36.
Yeah, 12. Yeah, Section 36 dash 1257. An engineer is going to make that determination based on some rather quantitative versus qualitative factors, I would think. So at the very least, it would, might be nice to provide some type of, even if, even if in the ordinance it had a list based upon this, 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 and anything else that's deemed appropriate, such as the soil quality, the terrain, I don't know personally what those items would be, but at least, I mean, he's not going out there and saying, hmm, looks good, doesn't look good. It's, it's based on some, something quantitative. So maybe if that was identified, it would help people reading the ordinance to understand that. I think there's still an issue with, even if there's a complaint about a site, is it, is the action taken on inspection or do they wait for, what things are solely complaint-based? And then if there is a complaint or, and it's validated, how is enforcement enacted? Because it's still a little bit vague. Things can, can get fudgy where it seemed like the city should have acted and they didn't. Why didn't they? It would be nice to have things a little bit more concrete as to when, as a homeowner, if I had a complaint, who do I go to? I can go to the city and talk to them, who in the face, maybe, and it's not going to be meaningful, then I want to know that upfront. And then I was wondering, Platter Teague, maybe you can tell us, what is actually required on a survey? Because we heard about this evening in our public comments section of the meeting, based on what, what's showing up on the, the first survey of the existing property before any alterations are done?
I'm not sure if we have a checklist of what needs to be on the survey, but we certainly are, are hearing that, that we heard this evening, things that aren't showing up, like a drain tile, a private drain tile. Even if a surveyor goes out there, maybe that's missed. So maybe it's something we need to put together, a specific list of what needs to be shown on that.
Especially in the winter, if you're doing a survey in the winter, you're not, you may not see swales, you wouldn't see some of the more low-profile measures that have been taken. But then, on the other hand, I would think that retaining walls and things like that, even window wells, it might be wise to, to see those kinds of things, but I'm sure the industry has its own standards as well. But once again, it gets fudgy when you don't, you can't enforce things if you don't know what's there to enforce or to even assess, so that's kind of my concern. I was intrigued by the recording, you know, the maintenance declaration recorded on the property records, in that, like they said, it would come up on a title search, so people would know this is a feature of the property that they're responsible for, just as an easement would be. And I would think like anything else, if it's eliminated at a future date, then that could be documented in the property records as well. But at least it does put somebody on notice.
Commissioner Carr?
I wasn't able to attend the work session, but interestingly enough, I don't know when it was, Platter Teague, I, we had exchanged some emails, because I felt a lack of understanding of what the process was, whether it was a variance, a tear down, and I was searching for checklists, because then it would, and sometimes we have applicants come to us and they don't get us something until the last minute, and so, and Carrie, you sent me some documents, but they were more like, I don't know if those were the forms, but it, they weren't in the checklist format. For me, a checklist format is easy, because then I know exactly what's expected of me as an applicant. And then as a planning commissioner, I would know exactly what I'm expecting to see from the applicant. It makes it very clear what the requirements are, because sometimes if there's various forms, or you have to look at the ordinance, there's a lot of different areas you have to go to. If it's a comprehensive checklist, it's all there. So it, I mean, whether it's drainage issues or landscaping, landscaping plan, even if it's meeting the requirements for a variance, just having a checklist for these various, whether it's variance, PUD, amendment to the comp plan, what are our criteria, what are we expecting to see? What are we asking applicants to come to us with? It's really, we're talking about a process, improving the process that we currently have, and one simple way of doing that is through a checklist. But Platter Teague, do you want to comment on that?
Certainly. Our zoning, all of our zoning applications have a checklist, and it lists specifically all the, all the plant, all the survey documents, building elevations, what they're needed to submit. We don't have that for a residential building permit. I did have a conversation quickly after our work session with the, with the building official. That is something that we're, that we have to, to get done. It's clear the commission wants that, it's, that's something that we have to do, and so we'll, we will get on that.
You know, I just offer up a suggestion, maybe as for part of our work plan for 2015, we could do a review of the current checklist we have and develop one for residential applications? Just because, again, I feel that it would be important for all of us to understand what those requirements are. And again, just, this raises the issue of, sometimes I've noticed applicants have come in at the last minute with something for us to consider. That doesn't give us time to review the documents that may be in front of us. Is there some practice that we have in place with regard to deadlines and how they're enforced?
Those are usually revisions to a plan they've already submitted.
Okay.
So, tough to.
That's a judgment call.
Yeah.
Because you do have a, you have deadlines in terms of, if, if you don't get an application by a certain date, it doesn't get on that planning permission meeting.
We do. Yeah. And we have 10 days from the date that 10 or 15, depending on the type of application, to determine whether it's complete for processing.
Right.
So, you know, again, I don't, any reaction on putting that in the work plan? The review of current checklist and development of checklist for residential applications?
I guess the only, I want to be careful to stay in our sandbox. So, I, I mean, to me, checklist, I think it's important for us to articulate the need for them, but it feels to me like that's a staff function that, you know, it's how you're going to manage making sure that the code requirements, whereas our sandbox is figuring out if we're clear enough about the code requirements.
And that gets into all kind of building code issues and other things that we're, don't have the expertise like the city would have in the chief building official, so.
So I think it's important for us to understand that they exist and to be cognizant of them as we're considering recommendations we make. I'm not sure that we should be the ones creating the checklist.
I don't have a problem with that. I'm not sure I'd have the expertise to create it, but I think more just comfort level on my part, knowing that there are checklists.
Right.
And just the opportunity to review what's on those checklists to make sure that's in line with.
Yeah.
What our expectations are.
And I think that would help educate us about things that we might want to think about whether we recommend be in the code.
I, I could offer up, once we get a draft of that work through with the building official, I can bring that to the planning commission, whether it's an agenda item, back-up packet for information, and we can get some input that way.
I think that'd be great. Commissioner Forrest?
I think, too, there's a perception by the, the building developers, the developers and the builders, that anything new is our responsibility, or that we are the ones who initiated or have, are making new requirements that are costing them money. And some of them, the additional surveys, may be very much so, but some of these are public health and safety issues as well. The drainage isn't just have to do with planning, it also has to do with a lot of other things. So I think, I think that's a perception that we need to be aware of, and I'm not sure how we would actively address that. But at least, as we get a better understanding of the process and who does what and who looks at what, we can be more clear with, with the public as well, as, that, yeah, that's, this falls under the zoning code. Yes, this is part of your permit application, but it's not a zoning matter, so, but it's all getting kind of, once again, muddled together, and I don't think that's helping anybody really understand the process any better. I was kind of curious, what's this, the National Geodetic Vertical Datum of 1929, that's in the. this building safety policy thing, regards the elevations of the land, somebody who, and I know there are people here who know all about this, if you can tell me, I would find it very helpful sometimes when people come to us for a variance, and it looks like it might affect the adjoining properties, I find myself wanting to follow those contour lines further out. Is it, is there information available that isn't expensive to obtain, so that that kind of information can be added to our, added to the surveys of the drawings at some point, when it's appropriate?
Well, I mean, I think that goes to what the submission requirements might be, and I know from time to time, we've had discussions about whether we ought to add kind of features on adjacent properties to the submission requirements, and maybe that's part of what we should be considering.
Yeah, that's a, that's an excellent point, because on our commercial reviews, we do require certain distance off-site. I'm not sure that's the case with, say, a variance, where we're typically just seeing the survey, maybe they'll extend a little ways. I'd have to check on that, I'm not, I'm not certain at how that reads now.
And this one just goes to each lot corner, that's why it was...
And I'm, I think your point is well-taken as well, Commissioner Forrest, about, you know, as we start to kind of inventory this, before we start making decisions, we certainly want to get input from all of the stakeholders here, you know, the residents, and homeowners, and property owners, but also the people who are doing the building, as to what the impact this is going to have, just so we're aware of all that information before we're making decisions about what we're going to be asking for. Commissioner Platter?
I just want to have a comment, too, when, a lot of this, we're reacting to situations that are happening in our community. You know, I don't think anyone's coming in with an agenda to do this or that, it's, we see these things happening with our neighbors, and our, our residents, that there are these issues with tear downs and rebuilds, and we're, at the end of the day, they're really looking to the city to make things right, right or wrong sometimes, but that's, that's the perception of the city being there for them, and a lot of them unfortunately don't have that perception right now. And it's out there a lot, so I, I think, just be known that we're trying to help fix things, not necessarily, you know, we're, we've got a lot of things going on in this great community, but we're all trying to work together to get at those, and not necessarily just doing something for no reason at all. I mean, there is a very good groundswell, or very large groundswell in our community of things that aren't going right on these situations.
Yeah, especially on this stormwater management issue, you're right. Commissioner Olson, anything to add to the list?
A lot of the comments that have been made were the ones I had, too. I think that, that maintenance declaration is a good thing to have, and I do think you can, what I really liked about it was the fact that they directed you on how to maintain it, because nobody knows rain gardens, you know, what to do with that, you know, we're always putting those all over the place, and then, you know, it's a nice little, nobody knows what to do with it. So, I think that that's a good thing to do, the checklist is huge. I think the watershed district has a lot of good, you know, things in place, so we could maybe check that out, too. I think that they really know what they're doing, and, and, you know, we might be able to follow some of their guidelines.
Commissioner Hobbs?
Well, actually, yeah, first of all, thanks for having me here, I really appreciate being a part of all this. And, you know, I spent a lot of time working on stormwater issues in Minnesota, so, actually, a lot of the suggestions you guys are making actually make a lot of sense, in terms of, also, and it's not unusual for communities to have a box to check, to make sure that you've talked to the watershed district, so that's a, a good thing to do. I would also suggest, too, that it's, it's important, I think, to have some kind of clarity in terms of standards, when you have drainage issues, you know, I would certainly advocate for having some good targets for what we want to see happen. Give folks flexibility within proven parameters to achieve those targets, but have clear targets. And in fact, you know, the watershed district, or at least Nine Mile, has the standard when they're near a water body, to keep one inch, the first one inch on-site. That's something that potentially you could expand citywide, and there are issues with soils and everything else, but there are ways to, to address that as well, so. I, I think this is a, certainly an important issue, and it's a tough issue for a community like Edina that's in a transition. You don't have just a wide-open playing field to redesign things, but there's certainly opportunities to, to be creative.
Yeah, it was, I was going to save the introduction of Commissioner Hobbs, and so Commissioner, and Chair of Comments, but I will tell you that Commissioner Platter and I had a chance to sit in on the interviews, and it was an extraordinary group of people who were interviewing for this open spot, and that alone is a testament to Steve's qualities, and one of those, he says he's done a lot of work in the, in the stormwater management, he was actually the executive director of the Rice Creek Watershed District for a number of years, so, it's a great resource for us to have on the commission.
And we grabbed onto that right away.
It caught our attention, to say the least. So, I, those are, those are great comments. Commissioner Halva?
You were taking copious notes during, I noticed, during the meeting, you were taking copious notes. Anything to add to the list that we've...
Well, I guess I don't, I was mostly taking notes, just to kind of understand what was going on.
Like the rest of us.
And also, just to kind of take in everybody else's comments, and I agree for the most part, and they were mostly just like clarifying my questions that I had, but in terms of anything else to add, I think everything that's been said, I agree with. I don't know, that's...
One of the tough things about going near the end, a lot of good comments before that.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry, I don't have anything to add.
No, thank you. You know, I, I guess I would echo a number of the comments, picking up on what Commissioner Platter said earlier, yeah, we, you know, part of the reason we're doing this is we recognize from hearing from folks, that this is, this is an important issue to people, and we want to try to drill into it, and figure out how to, how to solve it. I'll tell you, one of the takeaways that I had was, as we were listening to staff, how many new people there are? So, you know, Russ is on since June, we have a new city engineer, we have a redevelopment coordinator who's been here about a year, we have a new building official who I hadn't met before, we have, so these are, we have enormous turnover, and so, while I understand that people are frustrated, and that things haven't always gone as we'd like them to go, I had a positive sense of people, that that group of people is trying to get their arms around this, and figure it out, and they understand that people are frustrated, and they're trying to, trying to manage that. So, that leaves me with some optimism. The, the word that Steve used earlier, clarity, is the word I had written down with certainty. I, I think we need more certainty, and I think that would help everybody, I think that would help the builders, I think that would help property owners, I think that would help staff, I think that would help the commission and the council, and so, the more we can have that, the better, I think, things will be. The other real big takeaway for me, and as a planning commissioner sitting here, we're kind of oftentimes in a theoretical, kind of looking at the future mode, and we get a variance, or we get some other project that comes in here, and we're looking at Russ's engineering report on the recommendations they're going to have to make, as to how the stormwater's going to work, once the project is complete. The big takeaway to me today was, there's a large portion of time between when the project starts, and when it is complete, and a lot of the problems, and a lot of the aggravation that we're experiencing is during that transition period, and I think it feels like, to me, we have even less certainty during the transition period, and we end up in a position where we're saying to people, you know, just wait till it's done, and then, if it works out, that'll be okay, but in the meantime, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of words like sediment is a nice tidy word, but it's really mud and sludge coming your way onto your property, and, and that's, you know, that's a, you know, anybody's going to be aggravated when that's happening, so I think we have to do better on our, on our transition rules as well. There was a portion in the meeting where we talked about, you know, the residential versus the commercial, and that came up on the checklist thing, and I think that's a good idea. And I guess I would just ask the question, and I don't know the answer to it, but whether there's a reason for us to treat the residential any differently than the commercial, maybe there is, but, but from a kind of expectations for the application, and for the builders, and for the rules, I, I'm not sure that we should, and I've gotten a sense that we, I've gotten a sense both from what was said today by staff, as well as what we hear from our, you know, our neighbors and friends in the community, that they don't feel like the residential is treated with the same kind of scrutiny that the commercial is. So, those are my kind of big-picture thoughts, I agree with, in terms of the maintenance, you know, I'm, just today was for a commercial property, working on a maintenance, stormwater maintenance facility agreement, that's going to be recorded with the property on a commercial property, well, why wouldn't we have the same thing for residential properties? And if that changes in the future, then you take that off the title, and you replace it with the next maintenance agreement, I don't think it should stop us from improving in the future.
Right, right.
But it at least reminds people that it's there, and, and, right, and what to do. And then, the only other thing I would say is, you know, do, I think we, we probably still need to do some more information gathering, if we're going to take steps to make some changes to the code, obviously, we're going to want to do that in a public hearing, and we want to hear from all the stakeholders on that, before we're, because there's going to be some interest to balance, and we want to make sure we're being smart about how we do this. So, Commissioner Halva?
Well, now that I look back at them, I do have something to say. I really liked Commissioner Lee's comment about how this, especially with all the rain we've been having, and kind of bringing this up, it kind of encourages as much impervious surface as possible, and I thought, you know, that's, we've, I know we've talked about that a lot with landscaping, and so, I think that that's, that's something that would be important to me, I guess, but I know that it's kind of hard sometimes, especially with like the kind of engineering, how the, the management would be, so I guess I don't know much about that part, but I really liked her comment, and I think we should include it.
Yeah, and picking up on that, I think, you know, we, we're, what we're hearing kind of firsthand is the flood control, flood management, but a lot of this is water quality issues, too, and we'll really, we'll save money, we'll have better water, if we can cleanse it naturally through a percolation process, and, so the more we can do to think about ways to keep water on the property, that really helps in a lot of ways. All right, so, good comments, Carrie, I assume you've been furiously taking notes over there, capturing all this?
I have been, and I think I heard, maybe even an addition to the work plan, and that's under the zoning ordinance amendment, maybe we add work with engineering to develop clear grading and drainage regulations, you know, that, that paragraph that we looked at, that's within the zoning ordinance, you know, he referred to a lot of chapters that are outside of zoning, but there is that one provision, so maybe we work with Ross and engineering, and, and make that more clear.
Yeah, and, and it sounds like, you know, he would have some suggestions about how maybe to, to tailor some of those, to find that right sweet spot, that, you know, Commissioner Hobbs was talking about, setting targets, we don't have to dictate for people how they get there, you know, leave some creativity there, but let's get some little tighter parameters than we have. So, maybe it's there, maybe there's also, you know, I suppose in, in item 400, policy recommendations on monitoring residential redevelopment standards and ordinance, that's, that continues to be a part of that management, but I do like putting some in the zoning ordinance amendments as well.
Commissioner Forrest?
Okay, here's one that's not as vague. As I was listening to you talk about the transition period, when things can really be disruptive, and one thing that was new for me was this whole temporary coverage concept of using vegetation and stuff to stabilize all of the, the dirt and whatnot that's being shoved around. I would like to see those temporary coverage requirements addressed in the construction management plan, because it has to, it's something that they're going to be seeing, or being called about, when, you know, Cindy will be called about, there's water running on, or whatever. It's, it's a really logical fit to me that she would, that's one of the things you'd look at, is are they complying with this requirement?
Yeah, maybe that's in general the place where this transitional stuff ought to be going.
Yeah, I was just, and you talked about it, too, like, when Ross went and looked at spots, he went to three different areas of the code. Now, how, I mean, how is someone supposed to figure that out?
I've heard enough.
I don't think any of us on here had figured that out, and, and, but how do we clarify, to echo on your point of clarification, simplify somehow where all this is, so they're not, so everyone has the same requirements in front of them, so, you know, if someone doesn't miss anything, because it's hidden in there also. I mean, it's, I think, it's in fairness to everyone.
Right.
It should be clarified.
Yeah, I think, you know, even builders, what they don't want is you to tell them, you know, after they've already bid the project out, now, now, yeah, right. Okay, any other things that we ought to be, you know, the, on commission liaison work? I think all of those, I don't know, so, the first one we had is connectivity living streets, obviously, we talked about that tonight, that's going to be ongoing, and Commissioner Platter and Commissioner Carr are working on that. France Avenue corridor planning, we haven't really gotten started on that, have we, Carrie? Or is that the, the stuff that you're been doing at, on this? I'm, I was thinking north of 62, but we're talking south of 62. Okay, so that is quite underway, there's, it's actually being constructed, if anybody has driven over in the Southdale area. When is that due to be completed, by the way? Six years?
Weeks.
Sorry, just felt like six years, no. Good, that's great news, so six weeks. I think that's, that'll be great to see how that unfolds. Then, we, we did list the Minneapolis 44th and France small area plan, they've, have they completed that, Minneapolis?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know that that needs to be on here, I suppose it could continue, we haven't had a formal liaison to that, have we? We've just been, kind of staff has been monitoring that, and...
That's all done.
Yeah, so maybe that's something we can take off the list. Grandview continues, actually, the, the council did issue requests for interest, and got 10 teams that responded with letters of interest, that I think it's going to, the council is going to discuss at their September 2 meeting?
Correct, they're going to interview four.
Are they?
Of the 10, yeah.
And do we know who the four are? We do, but we don't?
Let me think about it, write it down, I don't want to say anything that's not right, but let me, let me think about it for a couple of seconds, I think I can come up with the four.
But September 2nd, they'll be discussing?
September 2nd, at their work session at 4 o'clock, they will be doing the interviews.
Oh, very good, okay. And then, if we flip the page over, we're, we'll be having ongoing work on the small area plan, the commissioners Forrest and Lee are leading for Valley View and Wooddale, and maybe at commission comment, we can get an update on that. And then, as Carrie put on here, the Cahill and 70th is the next one the council would like us to start aiming for. And then, we have begin preparation for the 2018 comprehensive plan. So, any other things to add to this list? Just, you know, pile on, I'll, I'll be gone by February, so. Commissioner Shearer and I, we'll, we'll add to the list, and...
I have a question, how, how do we follow up on that, that whole density discussion?
Oh, great point, that's, I think that, that belongs on this list. So, great catch, when we had, well, we've had several of these Southdale residential projects that've come through, and we've, in addition to the comprehensive plan change that we had to make, was more of a housekeeping matter, and I still remember the night we were here, thinking we were going to figure out the densities, and suddenly realizing that was a much longer exercise than we thought it was. And I think there's, you know, what are we, at 700 or 800 new residential units already approved in the Southdale area? And, and that's not even including the sketch plan at 7200 France, which who knows what ends up happening with that, but I think when we saw that, we were anxious about what that, what the consequences were, and I, and I think that the community is anxious about that, certainly after we had the sketch plan on 7200 France, the council got an earful from neighbors who were concerned about it. And so, I think we have to, Commissioner Lee, I'm glad you reminded me, because I And so I think we have to, Commissioner Lee, I'm glad you reminded me, because I think we do need to have some kind of discussion about how we're going to tackle that. And I don't know if that's a, if that's a work session that we have some discussion about ways of engaging the community on that topic. I just think we have to talk about what the consequences of more residential development are.
Yeah, I think we had discussed that certainly merits certainly, at, at a minimum, a work session for us to just figure out how we want to approach it and what, what...
Right.
What's the next step, but I don't know how you would kind of frame that within a, on the work plan.
Well, I think it's, you know, it's earlier than the comprehensive plan, because the thing about this is, this isn't something that we're inviting. This is what the market is creating. I mean, these, the Byer lease project, the Lenar project, the Southdale 1 project, these were all market rate, you know, these were, this was the market saying that there's an opportunity and they would like to develop more residential property in that area. And so we need to kind of get in front of that and be planning for what that means and what things are advantages, what are challenges, how do we accommodate it? Commissioner Platter?
Probably wouldn't happen yet, but when anything come out of the visioning piece we're coming up, or would that be too late for our needs? Does that make...
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Probably too late. I, I was just bringing that up as when that comes.
Well, I like the idea, I mean, we've talked about a work session on the living streets, but I, I like the idea of a work session discussion on this, that then, you know, just like tonight when we had a work session, we come to our regular meeting and we kind of can share some of the thoughts that come out of that. I think that's important for the public, but maybe that's something we try to tee up this fall.
I like that.
And I, I do think that has to be on the work plan in some way, some, I'm not quite sure how to frame it, but something about, maybe it's residential redevelopment in the Southdale area or density in general, or just have a talk about it.
Maybe under policy, be policy recommendations, but like you said, it'd be an additional item now that we're adding.
Maybe it's number five.
What do we call it?
Okay.
In doing a, a work session too, I think this goes hand in hand with engineering and they're taking a look at some of the infrastructure needs in Southdale. So I think it would be good to bring them in on that as well.
Be good. Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Olson?
I want to stand too. But so is, should the policy recommendations also be where we talk about the living street piece? I know that that's ongoing with what you're working on, but maybe I've already forgotten what we agreed on, but is that where we want to discuss when we're talking about that work session? Is that going to be policy?
Yeah, I think it probably is. I think that makes some sense.
Although there is a policy already adopted, this is the plan to execute the policy.
But part of what we were talking about was how do we dovetail with that with the policies that we've talked about, for instance, on bringing buildings closer to the street?
That's true. That makes sense, yeah.
And so, we're trying to do something that's going to dovetail with what the living streets does.
I would, yeah, I agree with you, yeah.
Because you're working away, I understand that group's working away on the street side of it, that's not really in our bailiwick, but it's relevant to what we're trying to, the kind of expectations and certainty we're trying to create. So maybe that is, Carrie, something that we, again, I don't know, maybe that's a sixth item under policy recommendations.
Engaging the street.
Engaging the street, yeah.
Trying to further define that. What does that mean?
Right, in light of, in light of the evolution of this living streets policy. Commissioner Platter?
I just have one thing for folks to think about on this, we've kept adding on here. I just want to, you know, maybe prioritize what's realistic to get at and what the priorities are, and I don't know if we have to do that tonight, but...
It's a...
We've got a big list here and with limited resources, and what are the, the top tier ones? Just something to think about.
I, I, so I think that's a great suggestion, and maybe what we do is we take this kind of list that we've cobbled together tonight here, Carrie, and you bring it back, and what we spend our meeting, you know, our discussion in September on is putting them in order of what we think is the most pressing and creating priorities. Yeah, this was, this was great. Yeah, I figured, we've bit off a lot here to chew. All right, anything more on the work plan? Very good. Thank you, everybody. Next up is zoning ordinance amendments. Carrie, you've got a, you're taking a stab at a few items here. You want to just kind of walk us through this?
I have. There are essentially four ordinance amendments wrapped up into this one. That being the front street setback that we talked about, well, maybe it was a month ago now. The second being the one foot rule for tear down rebuild in the first floor elevation. The second piece of it is a suggestion that we've talked about in that same regard. That ordinance was created when we couldn't grant variances. We had that special conditional use permit provision. So the thought here is maybe we take that back to just the planning commission level and it's done by a variance. We had some very excellent conditions that were put in. I'm not suggesting we take those out. They're just wrapped in, they would be considered as part of the variance. So I throw that out for consideration.
Somebody care to make a motion? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, but only a little bit. I, I mean, I'm, I think that's, we've wrestled so much, I think those are, that's a classic variance, and the reason we did it that way is at the time we weren't able to, we were legally precluded from doing variances, and that was our way to try and manage it, so I think it makes total sense to go back to a variance approach to that.
And then the number four was knocking off the part A of the lighting ordinance. So, so what I thought that we would do is, you know, we can take comments and discuss any pieces of this, but schedule a public hearing for your October 2 meeting, and then if we come up with a recommendation that night, great, and we'll, we can forward something on to the city council either late November, or late October, November, whenever we...
So for all four of these?
For all four of them, correct.
So comments on that? Commissioner Shearer?
But are we going to discuss the let out tonight?
We sure can.
It would seem like before a public hearing, we'd be sure that we stand behind the choices or the recommendations that we want discussed.
I agree.
Have at it.
Well, I want to be sure I understand the first section. I have the options per the attached. Is it, first of all, is it just if 1, 1, or then if 2, 2, or if 3, 3, or do, okay, so we just rotate down? All right, and, and when we, this line that appears repeatedly in a budding lot, that's a corner lot with a side street setback, shall not be deemed an abutting lot in terms of the calculation. So if you're on a corner and you have an abutting lot on one side that counts, nothing on the other side, do we, we're only going to then say that you have to match at least the house that is in the correctly applied abutting lot?
That's correct. You're matching the setback on the same street.
Okay.
The way the code reads now, you could average the two abutting lots and they're on different streets, the front street setback.
And I don't know, I was trying to think of examples as I went through this, and if you, if you get to number three, but you might not have gotten to it with the first two, I was trying to think of places where the averages are very skewed. And the one I really particularly remembered was in about the, I don't know, 50, 600 block of Wood Dale. I think it was within the last 18 months, where we have houses, when you look at that block, that are clearly all on abutting lots, but the, the variation, I mean, it was several different time periods that they were built, and the variation of setback is extraordinary. And, and I didn't, I feel like there sometimes are cases where none of the above really is a fair application of the question. And I, I don't know, I mean, maybe that just then becomes a variance request, I don't know.
That, that's staff's thinking, there's no way we can write an ordinance that's going to cover, cover every scenario that's out there.
Right.
We've tried.
We have tried.
So, so my assumption is correct, that that would just then, that the proponent would just come forth with a variance request and base it on the unusual layout of their particular block on their particular street?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Other thoughts on that first item that we've wrestled with in the past here? Any direction for staff?
On the first item, which is the front street...
Right, front yard setback requirements.
And seven, paragraph seven, the highlighted area. If that's, if a split level dwelling is torn down, a new home is built, the first floor elevation of the dwelling unit being torn down is deemed to be the lowest elevation of an entrance to the dwelling, excluding entrance to the garage and entrances that do not face a street. I know we've talked about this before. And didn't we say that there's oftentimes an entrance near the garage? So I'm wondering, so that would exclude that, I guess, entrances that, it would face, that, that entrance would face a street, so that could be deemed to be the lowest elevation, which is not what was intended. So I'm wondering if it should say in entrances that do not face the front street.
So let me, let me jump in here, because I just want to make sure I'm not confused. That second page is not a continuation of the first page, is it, Carrie? So that's, the second page in number seven really deals with the CUP about heights.
Correct.
Okay, so we're not, that's the next item.
But it's, it looks like it's a continuation as you read the...
Yes.
I can see, at first I thought it was part of that front yard setback, but it's really that second issue.
It's the second issue, okay.
And so if we went to a variance, you know, what you're envisioning, Carrie, to be to kind of use this as a policy to help guide the variance, or how, are you, or would we just try to manage it?
Yes, yeah. I, I'm taking that same language from the conditional use permit section and putting it right here. So you need a variance if you go over a foot, and you can do that only under those, those same three criteria that we, that we look at now.
So, so numbers seven and eight that are on page two of this packet item...
Yeah, the, the number, number eight, that is, while it's highlighted as new language, it's the same language that we're, that we're taking out under the conditional use permit.
But this would be at the end of a variance section, is that...
No, this is at the end of the special setback requirements for single family, or single dwelling unit lots.
Right, so, so there's something between 36-439-1 and 36-439-7?
Yeah, there's a 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. I just didn't, I'm not changing anything.
So seven is part of 36-439?
It is. It's the second issue.
Just a little ellipsis in there between those, okay. All right, so you're right, it is exactly in there, and so my apologies, that, so you're saying import that language into a variance analysis for these special setback?
Right.
And so Commissioner Carr, we're back to talking about whether it's the garage door next to the garage door or the...
Right, it's a, yeah, and I think the other language is fine, and it did look familiar about the exceptions, but I just feel that you would, you could have a garage, you could have an entrance next to a garage door, and that, then you would be excluding that entrance from the determination. That would be, the first floor elevation of the dwelling unit being torn down is deemed to be the lowest elevation of an entrance to the dwelling, excluding entrances to the garage, and excluding entrances that do not face a street, which could include that door next to the garage. And so, don't you need to say front street there? Do not face a front street, entrances that do not face a front street.
If that door leads to the garage, it wouldn't be included.
Commissioner Forrest?
It would be. When we talked about this previous, we, we, I, I remember I had in mind some houses in, in the city that are split entry or split level houses that have a garage door at a lower level than the front entrance, and alongside of it is another door, which is not a door into the garage, but it's into their basement level. However, I think the only change that I would like to see to this is to, to change the word "to" to directly "into," so excluding entrance directly into the garage and entrances that do not face the street, because I'm hoping that those are few and far between, as far as variances coming to us, and that that would be a situation where it would be appropriate to have a variance, because it clearly is, is a different application than what we is generally thought of in this one. But I just, it's, you'd get into a lot of illustration if you want to get, if you want to get more tight into as to whether it's a lower level or main entrance and stuff like that.
Commissioner Lee, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, and I was going to say, Commissioner Carr, when we, when I discussed that last time, I thought the consensus was, so what's the problem? So if that is the door, okay, it's at that lower level.
Then you would consider that to be the...
Yeah. And if they wanted to make it higher, they'd have to come in for a variance. So I think those homes are probably fewer.
That's true.
But they're, I mean, they do exist, but I guess the commission kind of felt that that is an established lowest floor, it's not going to be a split level anymore, so it's got to be somewhere from that level to where it is now, so why not establish that as the lowest level, and let's see what they can do with it? I think that's how it went.
Okay, okay. I, that, that explains it.
We have to ease Commissioner Hobbs into this, he's going to go running screaming from the room. All right, other, Commissioner Carr, you good with that?
Yes, although I just want to make sure I understand, it says excluding entrance to the garage. By entrance to the garage, are you referring to a pedestrian entrance, or are you referring to the car entrance?
Any entrance, I think.
Either one? Okay, I mean...
That's why I wanted directly into. That's why I wanted directly into the garage, so it was clear if it's an accessory door for the garage, or whether it's the main vehicle door for the garage to the bay, then either one of those would be excluded.
I concur with Commissioner Forrest on that, that that would add some clarity to it.
Directly into the garage? Commissioner Shearer, you're looking puzzled down there.
Well, I live in one of those houses, so I of course take this very personally. And I'm, I'm, I'm thinking this gives me the opportunity, if I want to tear down my house and rebuild it, I, I have all of these things. I have a garage door that faces the street. I have a door that goes into the garage from, that is a pedestrian entrance, and then at the side of the house, I have a door that goes into an above level, you know, one of the four levels of the house at the back of the garage. And then I have the main entrance, which you wind around and go up to, because mine is not a split entry, it's a split level. So if I'm reading this, then if I tore my house down and I'm excluding all those doors and garage doors that are on the lower level, then I could raise my front door, which is already probably a little higher than some of my neighbors because of the topography in the neighborhood, and the fact that mine is a split and theirs is not, I, I could raise that door a foot from my current front entry. So, so, so this doesn't, if our goal was to limit height, in, in my situation, it, it does not.
But isn't the goal to make sure you're not dramatically increasing that front entry, which we've always talked about?
Yes, I think that's also a goal.
That's part of the scale.
I think that's also a goal. I just, I don't know, we, we get so prescriptive sometimes, and, and these are houses that I think will be torn down, because it's not a desirable floor plan anymore. You know, my husband refers to our houses, no matter what I do to it, as a tear down, because we think it's not a desirable floor plan, and it's on a pretty large lot in the foothills of Indian Hills. So, you know, those houses, I think, will be torn down. We'll, we'll be applying this. So I just want to be sure that we get it worded in a way that if, 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 if that's part of the tear down stock in our city, it, it's doing what we want it to do.
But to me, it's okay if we're, if the new finished first floor is going to be roughly where the old one was.
Okay, regardless of, of the fact that I have colonials on either side of me, and, okay. All right.
Does that work?
I'm going to say it works, I just wanted to use it as an example.
No, it's a great example.
Yeah.
All right.
I just want a question.
Your example, you said you have a pedestrian door next to your garage.
Not facing front, though.
Not facing the front, but does it face the street?
No.
Oh, it doesn't, okay.
So I have a garage door facing the street, and then other doors that are pedestrian entries that do not face the street.
But do you go directly into that garage? I'm just kidding.
How long do you want to play with this? That's fine.
Sorry. All right, we're good? So Carrie, aside from a little tweak to the directly into, then we're, did we get where we needed to go, any, any other... Any, any other things on the corners and abutting and, do we, do, do we have to select one of those options, or how does that work? Really? Is it a secret ballot? Is that?
That, that's all I need, if, unless you have any other, we'll set up a public hearing for.
So that's for this, and then the lighting is part of it as well?
Right.
And then, and then we'll reinsert paragraphs two, three, four, five, six?
I can do that for clarity, yes. That will probably make things, yeah.
So that the whole ordinance, and then we'll just highlight the stuff that's new. Okay.
Chair?
Yes.
On the lighting, it's just a typo that when we change ten foot candles to one foot candle, we still have one foot candles, so just make that singular, that's all.
Very good catch. See that, Carrie?
I see that.
What's that? For point-five foot candles? Point-five foot candle? Yeah. Okay. It's parallel, our plurals. Okay, so are we good with Carrie scheduling a public hearing for early October, and we'll get some input on this? All right, great. Next item is planning commission blog. Jordan, are you going to talk blog with us? We're going to become bloggers? Not all of us are probably capable.
This shouldn't take too terribly long. So a couple months ago, the need was come up by another board and commission to sort a blog on the city's blogs for boards and commissions. So we've done that, and it's open for all boards and commissioners at the city here to submit content to be posted on the blogs. Are you, are, this is, the blogs can be accessed from our website, edinamn.gov, by navigating to blogs in the header or in the footer, or navigating to blogs@edinamn.gov, as seen here. We've named it the advisor, since they're all advisory boards and commissions of the city council. And we've had quite a few posts so far in the last couple months here from various commissions, from the preservation, the Heritage Preservation Board, the HRC, the, let's see, I think that was the Park Board there, Art Center Board. You guys are missing, so please for your, to submit some content. Generally with, when submitting blogs, we look for something that's between three to five paragraphs, and would be of general interest to, to residents. And because the blog is a city blog, and it's, and it's kind of meant to be as one voice, it's something that shouldn't be critical of, of the city itself, that's probably not the best platform for doing something like that. You know?
Information.
Yes. Informational is always best. So with, with that, if you decide that you wanted to, to do a blog as a, as an entire commission, as individuals or as groups within the commission, you can work with, with Carrie or Jackie on that to submit the blogs, they'll, they'll review it and work with you on any, any factual errors or anything that needs to be edited in that, and then we'll post that up for you. Any questions?
Commissioner Forrest?
Seems like a good place to clarify this. My understanding that this was open to commissions and working groups of commissions, is the way it was worded on the site. So one thing that was discussed at our Valley View Wooddale Small Area Plan Team was to use this as part of our communication and have a residence who's on the planning team draft one from their perspective as far as what the planning process is, and why, you know, that it is resident-driven as well as city-driven, and that kind, to get, to help get that message and that viewpoint across. So we're already working on, on exploring this, and I was wanting to speak to somebody further about that tonight anyway, and, so this is, this is great, and it's nice to know that it's open to things like that.
It's, it's sort of like how when the city was doing, going through the neighborhood recognition process, how they had the neighbor neighborhood blog, for those, those people in the working group to be able to, to blog about why we should have neighborhoods and this process that's going on. And this is kind of going off of that same concept, but expanding it to everybody that is a volunteer for the city.
Commissioner Carr?
If someone proposes, well, I'm not sure how it would work from a practical standpoint, but let's say one of us had an idea, we would submit it, then I would assume it would go to all the planning commission members before it was actually posted?
We could do that.
Or at least to the chair. But I would think it should go to everyone, since it's representative of the planning commission.
Sometimes it's just representative of a part of the planning commission, but I agree, it does reflect on the planning commission, and, and we might want it, I think it's good to be informed about all those things.
Well, that's, it's, no, it's up there anyways.
I was just thinking too, it'd be wonderful to see something perhaps addressing some of the more easily addressable factors of these, the drainage concerns. And as far as what, what is it that falls under our, our control as far as, or, you know, zoning, and what doesn't, and, and maybe just recognizing publicly, we know there's a concern out there, and that, you know, we continue to explore things to make this a little more transparent for the residents.
So, can people comment on these blogs?
Yes. Comments are moderated, so they, if anybody makes a comment, it'll go into your queue for, for me to review and approve or deny.
And then do you look to the blog author to reply to comments?
If you so choose, you can.
Okay. I know when we did the Grand View project, it was kind of before Speak Up, Edina, and before these blogs, and we had a different site, but it was actually, you know, for the Valley View Wooddale, it was really, it was kind of a useful, it took some time because you had to, you know, it was, it was only as valuable as the responses on that kind of thing, but, but when you responded, it was a useful vehicle, I think, for the most part, people were just trying to learn about it, and if they could post something, then you could respond, they, it was pretty effective, I thought.
And just, and just a note of clarification and the moderation, it's not necessarily that we're, we don't at all monitor for, for, necessarily for content, so if somebody's being critical of the city, or of the commissioners, or of staff, we'll post those as long as it's appropriate, if it's, if it's.
Civility.
Yeah, if it's, if it's, if it's, yeah, if it's inappropriate anyway, if it's threatening.
You can be critical, just be civil about it.
Yes, exactly. And then, obviously, links to commercial sites, spammy sort of things, we'll get rid of those too, but.
Don't need to be hijacked.
Yeah, exactly.
I did have a question. I have a question. I did look at this page, and, and just semantics here, why is it that everyone's listed as a guest, and then the first line actually identifies who they are?
We have a lot of, a lot of different, not only boards and commissioners, but also staff, that don't regularly blog enough to create an account for them. It's mainly a time issue, and it, it's just the number of accounts that would need to be created. I mean, we'd have three, four hundred accounts that we'd have to maintain on here for somebody who might blog once.
So if it's anybody other than Carrie, it, it shows up as guest?
Well, anybody other than?
For our commission?
Yeah, it depends. Like on Scott Neils, he shows up as his name for Parks and Rec One, it depends on who, who did it, Amy Smith from the golf course would come up as guest, Donna Tilter from the senior secretary comes up as herself.
Okay.
If, if it's something where you think you'll, you'll use this platform a lot, maybe we can, we can, I can set up a, an author account like that, so it shows up as planning commission member, and then we can clarify in the post who it is, depending on how much you want, decide to use it.
Okay.
Well, it's a, it's a good effort, I'm glad to see we're exploring evolving avenues of communication. It's important to keep trying new keys in the lock, and trying as many different ways as we can to communicate with the public, so, thank you, Jordan.
Thanks.
All right. Next is correspondence and petitions. You have the attendance sheet, so that's there for your reference, and I don't think there was a council update. I don't know if there's any highlights that you wanted to share with us, Carrie, anything that, the, the matter that we, that five of us handled last meeting, we'll be going to the, to the Council of Sixty-Six West matter, I'll be going to the council on, on September second.
Correct. Yeah, there were no planning items on the last council agenda.
So if you want to attend that, you should get here early, because there probably won't be many seats. It'll be on TV as well, live.
Simulcast.
Simulcast, and you can also watch it after the fact, so. And good work on that, that was a, that was a, I, I thought all of the commission did a great job of managing our way through that, so. Chair and commission comments, I don't have anything other than, again, welcoming Commissioner Hobbs, we're very have, happy to have a full nine now, we're ready to field the team. No more, no more four to four votes. And, and I don't know, Steve, you want to take a minute and just maybe tell us a little bit about where you're coming from?
Sure. We've lived in Edina for about, I don't know, sixteen years now, with my wife Michelle and daughter Madison, who's a, a senior at Edina High, and we just love this town. We came here, we really did pick Edina from a lot of different places around the country as a place we wanted to live, and I am currently the, the Minnesota State Director for an organization called the Conservation Fund, which is a nonprofit conservation group. So it's basically my job to travel around the state of Minnesota and acquire land on behalf of the state, or the federal government, or other nonprofit organizations. So I have a very nice job, where I get to see a lot of the state, and I have time now in my, in my career to be able to really devote more time to working here in Edina. So it's, it's great to be here, and I'm really happy to, to be a part of this. So thanks.
Well, it's good to have you, and as I said earlier, really, it was, I didn't even get to stay for the whole group of interviews, but it was an extraordinary group of people, a lot of really, we're so fortunate in this community to have so many people who are both capable and generous with their time, and, and it speaks highly of Steve's capabilities, that he was, he was the one that the council selected out of that group, so, great to have you on board. Other comments from commission members? Commissioner Platter?
I was just going to say one thing in the interviews, is we did tell everyone that there'll be two more vacancies at the end of this year, so keep that in mind. There were many, many good candidates there.
Bodies aren't even cold.
Bodies not even cold, and it's, got to think ahead, though.
That's really true. So there are, and we did mention that to folks, so that's a, it's a good thing for people to keep in mind come the end of the year. All right, other comments? Commissioner Lee?
I just want to give a little update on our Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan meeting team. We have been meeting regularly, we, we meet actually on the off week from the planning commission, so we're meeting, Arlene and I are meeting quite a bit. But we have scheduled now, we have some hard dates, so our first public, it's called our discovery workshop, which will be, the announcement will be going out soon, and obviously it's open to the target. Audience would be any residents in that general vicinity, but obviously, any Edina resident or business owner would be more than welcome to participate, and that's going to happen and take place on a Saturday morning, October fourth, and our timeframe is eight AM to twelve noon. It's going to start with a eight AM kind of just coffee and donuts kind of get together, and the real program will start at nine. At nine, there will be a presentation from our consultants, and what we've given them is the information that we collected at the kickoff. So they are not starting from scratch, this is going to be an update and a follow-up to that first meeting, so I want to stress that they are moving forward from that point. So I, I felt good that we were able to give them some concrete feedback and information that we'd already gleaned from participants at our June, was it June eighteenth kickoff? Gosh, that went by fast. And they will be providing a summary, we're going to have a little discussion on the area, a little heritage report of the area, so it's going to be interesting to give us a little background of, of that, the development of that whole node or intersection. And then we'll have actually what we're calling a walkabout, and we're going to be forming teams, gathering photos, and we're pretty tech savvy, so we'll be able to upload actual photos at, right after that workshop, and, and review them as a group, and then we will have one more activity to, to identify actual issues. So our consulting team is really on a tight schedule, this is, we're pushing them to, to move quickly, but very thoroughly, and so we really are working hard to try to get the word out and try to get as much participation as possible. So we'll be updating you with further dates, but again, as we, we discussed earlier, our timeframe was to hopefully be pretty close by the end of this year, but we're giving the consultants a little leeway over that holiday time to maybe push it into January, possibly even early February, before we actually have something that, that's presented. Yeah.
Well, that's great work. If you wouldn't mind just circulating, maybe getting to Carrie the dates that are coming up, if planning commissioners want to come out and see what you're doing. Great work.
And, you know, and as Susan said, we meet pretty much alternate Wednesdays when this isn't meeting, from six to eight PM, and the meetings have been in the community room. So you can always check probably the city website, or, and there's contact information for us on that page, so.
Your steering committee meets, then?
Right, right, the planning team. So we're, you know, people are welcome to sit in if they want to.
Very good. Other comments? Carrie, do you, did you round up the four?
Oh, I did, and I wrote them down, and.
Thought I would forget.
They are Fraunshu with Confluence, a planning, planning firm, Doran Companies, Greco Development, and Kraus Anderson.
And how did those four get selected?
They were reviewed by a team of staff, going through, we kind of ranked them all and discussed them, and those were the, the four that, that were put forward.
So it was Fraunshu?
Doran Companies.
Doran.
Greco.
Greco and Kraus Anderson.
Kraus Anderson and Greco Development.
All right. So watch for that on September second. Anything else? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post say nay. We are adjourned.